I'd like to call the August 14 regular meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Again, if you wish to comment during any of the public hearings, make sure that you fill out the paperwork and drop it up front and silence your cellphone. That being said, let's go ahead and do roll call.
Bishop.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Kimball.
Here.
Stephenson.
Here.
That was quick. Any amendments to the agenda this evening, Mr. Manley?
No, there's not.
How about ceremonies, appointments, announcements, and presentations?
None.
Okay, none being said, do we have any declaration of conflict this evening?
None.
No.
No declaration? Okay, perfect. Then that would bring us to the consent calendar. Mr. Manley, anything to go over?
Yeah, we got item A, which is the meeting minutes from the July 10, 2018 date. We have item B, the Gross-Glaser Annexation File ANNX-006-2018 Reason Decision. That would be it.
Okay. Everybody have a chance to take a look at those, look for a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as is.
Do we have a second? I don't have a second either. Mr. Wilson?
So, when you're approving the minutes, you're essentially agreeing that they were taken down correctly. So, it's not necessary that you were here for those prior actions.
I second. All right, we've got a motion and second. Roll call.
Stephenson.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight this evening, citizen issues. The section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not on this evening's agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings, we ask that you would hold those for that meeting. Any citizen issues this evening? All right, none being seen. We have no unfinished or old business, correct?
That is correct.
Then that takes us to item number 10, public hearings. So, we will go ahead with our first public hearing. We'll open the Chili Annexation, and I'll let you read all the file numbers.
Oh, what's the passcode? It's logged out.
I don't think you should say it over the air.
I can't read that. Need some spectacles. Sorry about that, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Lindsay King for the Planning Department, here to present the Chili Annexation, File Number ANNX-0007-2018. The owner being Christopher Chili, applicant being Stephanie Blaylock with Veritas. Planning and zoning commission is being asked to review the annexation request of approximately 9.6 acres and make a recommendation of single-family R1 zoning to city council. Property location is here in the hatched red area, right along the Spokane River. And here is the river. It's not labeled. And the subject site. The surrounding zoning is R1 in this yellow here, and everything else in the white excluding the river is within the county. You have some industrial just here up to the north in the dark gray for the heavy industrial and light gray for industrial. The property is located south, on the south side of East Maplewood Avenue, just west of Hutter Road. So, that's about a half mile west of there. Currently in Cootney County. Physical characteristics, there is a portion of the property that's located in the special flood hazard area. Anything to deal with the special flood hazard area will be taken care of at the time of any development or permitting. Water is provided by the city of Post Falls as well as sewer. There are six zone change criteria that the applicant will need to meet, the first being that it's consistent with the future land use map. Here you can see the future land use map. The yellow is residential, the purple is industrial, and the red at the very top there is commercial. Everything to the south in the white is the river or Cootney County. So, we obviously don't have any future land use for that. The second being that it's consistent with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. Located in your staff report, you have a comprehensive plan analysis which goes through different points and sections dealing with this specific property and how it meets those goals and policies. Number three, zoning is assigned following considerations for items such as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. The Maplewood Avenue that's located just north of the property is a major collector. So, that would take care of your street classifications. It's available to handle the heavier traffic than, say, a smaller private road. Existing development, to the, oops, let me get down here. To the north, you have a single-family subdivision here, and you have larger lots within the county along the river, and then some other larger lots within the city. Sorry, I'm jumping around. And again, future land use, we took care of that in the previous map that shows the residential yellow area for this specific spot. And the geographic or natural features will be the special flood hazard area. As you can see here in, let's see if I can get it. This purple line here is the boundary of the special flood hazard area set forth by FEMA. So, this is the 1% chance or 100-year flood plain, as it's previously called, that there will be a disastrous flood. Now, there's no structures located within that special flood hazard area, but any development down here will be required to have proper flood permitting, meeting the FEMA regulations and title, or chapter 15 within our municipal Number four, commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. As said previously, Maplewood Avenue is a major collector, which is a single-family residential zone. It could handle this. Number five, limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned along properties as they proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban activity. So, as you can see here in this map, you have the property highlighted in this teal color. And you have Hutter Road running north-south along this side of the photo. Seltice is, excuse me, right here. And then you have the Highway 41, I-90 interchange just right here. So, it is located fairly far away from any heavy commercial or trafficked corridors. You do have some industrial and commercial uses along Seltice, but it is located fairly far away from there. Number six, the industrial zoning is not applicable here because it's for a single-family R1. So, that does not apply. These were the agencies routed for this specific annexation. We did receive a comment from Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and they were neutral on the proposal. I'll stand for any comments or questions.
Any questions for staff? If we're good, thank you very much. All right, go ahead and bring up the applicant.
You should be good there. Just grab that guy.
Do what?
Yep.
And you can use the clicker or the keypad.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Stephanie Blaylock from Veritas. I'm a land use planner representing Mr. Chili's annexation request. I just have a few things to add to Lindsay's presentation, which was pretty comprehensive of the project. Mr. Chili's parcel is 9.67 acres with a single-family residence and an accessory living unit located on the property. We are requesting annexation with a zoning classification of R1, which is a single-family residential. The property currently has two water rights with Idaho Department of Water Resources, and Mr. Chili has agreed to transfer one of those water rights for the well to the city, but will maintain his water right for irrigation, wishes to maintain that. An email from John Beecham, Utilities Manager, on August 8 deems that as acceptable for the Water Division. The parcel is contiguous to city limits on both the north and the west property lines, as you can see from this map. The zoning classification to the north and the west is R1, making this annexation request compatible with the current neighborhoods and then a logical extension to the city boundaries. Mr. Chili's goal is to subdivide the parcel into three larger lots to accommodate one additional residence. The future lots would be larger than the current development pattern within the city limits for this area. Reasons for Mr. Chili's annexation request are to extend the city of Post Falls boundary to continue residential development of his property on the Spokane River, to create a lot for the construction of a new residence within city services. As Lindsay explained, the Maplewood Avenue is classified as a major collector roadway, which can handle this future development on this parcel. Per the staff report, the requested zoning is not anticipated to have any negative impact to the city's transportation system. The zoning is consistent with the goals and the policies of the comprehensive plan and the future land map. The site and future development will comply with the flood requirements of the city's code prior to any development. As Lindsay showed, there were several agencies notified, and there were no objections from any of the responses that were received. The proposed annexation with an R1, single-family residential zoning, would be consistent with the development pattern being established in this area and would be supported by public services that are nearby. We thank you for considering the request, and I stand for any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
None.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Public comment, for, neutral, or against?
None.
None being seen, no need for rebuttal. Any other questions for staff or anyone else before we close this out?
Nope.
None? So, we'll go ahead and close it, open it up for Commissioner comments.
Hey, it seems pretty straightforward. The comp plan says it should be residential. They're asking for R1, which is low-density residential, and it's very consistent with what's down there and in the vicinity. And it'll add a nice high-value property to the city, which will help all kinds of wonderful things when it comes to paying taxes, or receiving taxes, I guess, from the city's standpoint. So, it's, yeah, it's consistent with the land use map, it's consistent with the comp plan, and the R1 zoning is appropriate and meets all the requirements for R1.
Any other comment?
Everything he said.
Right. Okay. It sounds like everybody's on the same page. Looks like a good fit. So, I would go ahead and look for a motion.
In case of the Chili Annexation, ANNX-0007-2018, I would move to recommend approval of the annexation with an R1 zoning, finding that it is consistent with the future land use map, is consistent with goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan, and that the zoning of R1 is appropriate.
Second. Moved and seconded. Call for vote.
Bishop.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Stephenson.
Yes.
So moved. Brings us to the second piece of tonight's public hearing, and that is the Meadow Vista Estate subdivision. Go ahead and open that up.
Good evening again. Here for the Meadow Vista subdivision 0012-2018, Chapel Meadow being the owner and Ace Solutions being the applicant. Planning and zoning is being asked to review the subdivision request and approve the proposed subdivision along with any appropriate conditions if necessary. The request is to subdivide approximately 8.78 acres in a single-family residential suburban zone, so R1-S, with 26 lots in a single phase. This site has a previously approved PUD, which allows for a variation from the R1-S standards. We heard the PUD earlier this spring, and that was approved. This is a rendering of the approved PUD. As you can see here in the brown, you have the interior roadways. In the green, you have your required open space of 10%. And the white is the lots. You have the exterior lots and the interior lots here. Just to the north, you have Prairie Avenue and then Howell Road as well. I do apologize for the pixelation on that one. These are approved conditions number two for the PUD. This essentially states that the minimum lot area will be no smaller than 7,979 square feet. Minimum lot widths are slightly different. They will be following along with the single-family R1, excuse me, R1 setbacks and yard frontages and things like that. Again, 26 lots, and then it speaks of arrowleaf and the road improvements there. Project location is just west of Chase Road, south of Prairie. Here's Howell going north and south, and you have the Meadows and the Craftsman at Meadows here. The surrounding zoning is primarily R1-S with that light canary yellow and Cootney County with the white here. You do have a little bit of R1 just over here to the east. Again, it's approximately 8.78 acres of vacant land with no significant topology or vegetation. And water is provided by East Green Acres Irrigation District, and a will serve letter was provided by them. Sewer provided by the city of Post Falls. Here is a slightly clearer rendition of the subdivision plan. As you can see, you have arrowleaf here to the south, coming up and looping around, coming out to this now ingress-egress road to Howell. There will be no access to Prairie or Howell other than through this ingress-egress here. 26 lots in one phase, density of approximately 2.96 acres per unit, or units per acre. There are six subdivision criteria that will need to be met in order for approval. Number one being the definite provision for water supply system. That is adequate in terms of quantity and quality have been made, and that would be East Green Acres Irrigation District, and that will serve letter provides that for us. Number two, adequate provisions have been made for a public sewage system, and the existing municipal system can accommodate the proposed sewer flows. And that will be provided by the city of Post Falls, and we can accommodate. Number three, proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. There will be no negative impacts based on this interior road, and further analysis is located in the staff report. Four, all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, have been identified. There have been none identified. So, there are no hazards or topographical issues. Number five, the area proposed for subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms with other requirements found in this code. So, with the PUD overlay, it does conform with the zone. It is an R1-S with the PUD, which allows for the smaller lots and the different setbacks and such, things like that. So, it is, it does conform with the zone, with that PUD overlay. Oops, sorry. Number six, the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services by paying fees, furnishing lands, and providing other mitigation measures. So, this is taken care of at the time of development with impact fees and things like that for building permits. Agencies routed here. We received one comment from Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and they were neutral on the proposal. I'll stand for any comments or questions.
Questions for Lindsay?
None.
I think we're good. Thank you. All right. Go ahead and invite the applicant up.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hassel. I'm an engineer with Ace Solutions. Surely, we all recognize that your commission is not unfamiliar with this particular project or the piece of ground. The staff report is complete. It's concise. We have no issues with it at all. Just a reminder that the improvements along Prairie will be cashed out, and then the city can make those improvements when they want. And we have met the requirements that you asked, that the access onto Howell be in and out rather than just one way. I won't take any more of your time. I'll answer any questions that you have or any rebuttal if there's any.
Questions?
None.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you very much. Public comment?
None.
None? So, no need for rebuttal. Any questions? Questions for staff?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Go ahead and close this one out. Any comment?
With the PUD overlay, it meets all the requirements that were set forth within the PUD.
Right.
And the staff report has the criteria A through F, which are very straightforward, and it's water supply is there, sewer provision is there, streets are consistent with the transportation plan. There's no crazy soil or topography, and it appears to conform with all of the other requirements found in the code, basically as conditioned, based on the conditions 1 through 7 of the staff report. So, yeah, it seems like it meets all the criteria.
Well, I can remember, I think it was April 10 that we just saw this, the PUD was approved. So, it's still pretty fresh in everyone's mind. Any other comment?
No.
Go ahead and look for a motion then.
In case of the Vista subdivision, SUBD-0012-2018, I would move to approve the subdivision, finding that they have met the criteria 1 through F as listed in the staff report, and adopting conditions 1 through 7 as found in the staff report as well.
My second. It's been moved and seconded. Roll.
Stephenson.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
All right. So moved. That takes us out of the public hearings this evening and brings us to item number 11, which is new business. I believe Bill Melvin's going to present the city center parking plan, or at least involved in the presentation.
Yes. Let's see where we're at here. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Davis, commission members. Last fall, the city recognized that we had a need to more formally address parking within the city center area. We've got a city center plan that provides for mixed use within the city center area, but it really didn't have the specific details that were needed to show parking in the right of way or where we would need off-street parking and such. As we began to have success of some business location along Spokane Street and blocks off, that success created some parking that was spilling back into the neighborhoods and such. So, at that point, we decided to hire a consultant. We hired Welsh Comer engineers, Matt Gillis, who will be doing the more formal presentation this evening, has been the project manager on the project. We've had a steering committee. We've had technical advisory committee meetings. Mr. Latham of the commission was on our steering and tech committees, and we've had multiple public open house committees to engage the public in this process. Our goal this evening will be to get a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to city council to adopt the city center parking plan as an amendment to the actual city center plan. So, that's our goal. That's the motion we'll be looking for. So...
At this point, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Bill.
We'll make a presentation, and then...
Really quick, though.
Please address any questions to us. Yes.
Would that be part of the comp plan, the city center plan? Is that part of the comp plan, or is that a separate plan? Do you know?
Yeah, the city center plan is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. It's a kind of a subset, a side plan.
Okay, like the transportation master plan or the sewer master plan?
Highway 41 corridor plan.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Adopted by reference.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Bill. Mr. Gillis?
Good evening, commission. Matt Gillis, Welsh Comer engineers. I'm going to walk you through the plan. Let's see here. I do not use this, right? Use the mouse. So, as Bill mentioned, there is a history to the plan. I won't repeat that. But, as we first got into this process with everybody involved, we quickly realized there were kind of three main goals we wanted to get out of this whole effort. One was, we wanted to develop a plan that would provide us internal direction. So, as a city, we knew where we're going, what we're doing in the future from a parking perspective in our city center or downtown area. Secondly, we wanted to show potential funding agencies that we had our act together. We'd done our homework, and that we were prepared to be invested in from these funding agencies. Because when you submit a funding application to whomever it is, it's a bit of a dog and pony show. And so, whoever's got the most attractive projects typically gets the funding. Because the funding agency, they want to invest their money in a sure thing. And if we can show that we've done our homework, that we're ready to receive the funding through this plan, this document that we can reference and excerpts in any application, that's certainly a benefit. And then, secondly, along with funding agencies, we want to show the development community or those that are interested in investing in our city center that, again, we're ready. So, they have, the expectations are clear. There's a comfort level with those interested in investing. So, I'm going to circle back to that at the very end. But, those are the three main themes that we think are the output of this and result of this plan. As Bill mentioned, we had a very robust group of people at the city staff level. We called them the steering committee. We met on several occasions. They provided us, they provided the planning and design team kind of the technical backbone of the whole effort. We also had a technical advisory committee that was made up of city leaders, those that really have a pulse and a shared vision of what we want our downtown to look like, our city center to look like. And they were instrumental in helping us keep, helping us stay in our lane as we're going through the planning process. So, when we say parking plan, it's so much more than a parking plan. We can't put our blinders on and say, this street, we just want to put angle parking, that street, we want to put parallel parking. Because in all the streets, which I'll show you in just a moment, we've been given different right-of-way widths. So, there's different widths that the city owns on each street. And so, there are competing interests. Certainly, yes, there's parking, but there's also sidewalks and green space and stormwater and bike lanes. And how do we interact with the adjacent properties? And so, it quickly turned into much more than just a parking plan. I think it's far more comprehensive than that. So, those were the primary issues. Then there's all these secondary issues with, well, if we have parking everywhere and sidewalks everywhere, how do we deal with mail delivery? How do we do garbage pickup? We've got an urban... We've got an urban forest, how do we, do we maintain that, do we rip all the trees down? So there's all these other secondary issues that also impacted how this planning went. Some of the higher-level stuff that we considered were, I showed you this little puzzle here. It's, yes, parking's important, but at each street in our city center, sometimes you had, we have to place a higher emphasis on parking, and other places, we place a higher emphasis on a bike lane, and yet in others, on green space or sidewalk width. And so, there was definitely not a one-size-fits-all solution to our downtown, because every part of our city center is a little bit different now and in the future, as best we can tell. We spent a lot of time considering our, as I mentioned, our urban forest. There are several trees that are 48 inches in diameter. And if we take those out, that's something you can't get back. And so, is it important enough that we build our city center around some of these amenities? We generally thought it's, we need to be careful and maintain these things. As we went through the public process, we made sure the public understood that we're not gonna go and redevelop the entire city center all at once. This is gonna be a slow process, it's not even measured in years, it's more decades, okay? This is a 20, 30, 30-year type of effort. We're trying to get out ahead of what we expect our city can look like in the future, from a parking and street development perspective. The other thing we looked at is, if we can provide on-street parking, and we can develop adequate on-street parking, does that lead us down the path of requiring less off-street parking? And so if a developer comes in and is required to have a smaller parking lot, that typically means they can have a bigger commercial building, which is good for them, good for the city. And so, we spent a lot of time thinking about that. And I'm not looking for any rebuttal yet on the back-end angle parking, but we'll definitely get to it. We talked about back-end angle parking from a safety perspective a lot. It's not a hill we're gonna die on, but it's something we wanted to consider. And again, we will talk about it. Public outreach was pretty effective, we had three meetings. The first two were right in here, where we had a, Bill and I gave an introductory presentation, and then we went out in the rotunda for a open house, where we spent one time with people, showed them products, answered questions, and tried to get them up to speed on what we're doing. And the feedback was great. The third meeting, I think we captured a different audience. We shared a venue, or we attended the community barbecue a couple of weeks ago down at Camelan Park, where everybody walking into the barbecue had an oppo, they had to walk by us. And so, they had an opportunity to come through our boards, ask questions. Some of them walked right by, others, we pulled in and got their opinions. And it was, it was interesting. It was very good. And all that'll be summarized in our official output plan. So, this is the study area, I don't know how well you can see that, but the black line here indicates the boundary of the area. So on the south, it's First, okay? There's Templin's down here in the river. On the west, it's the river, Falls Park's here. On the north, it's Fifth. And then out here, so here's Idaho veneer site, and here is Idaho on the east side, okay? These different colors represent different right-of-way widths in the city center. And by right-of-way, I just mean how much property the city owns. And for whatever reason, our city fathers laid out Post Falls with a variety of widths. Sometimes we have 60 feet, sometimes we have 100 feet. And as you can imagine, that gives us a lot of variety and opportunity to do different things on different streets. So before we got into the actual parking study, we asked the steering committee and the technical advisory committee, as a planning team, you have to tell us who you think Post Falls wants to be, okay, in 30 years. The two extremes are, do we want to be where we've got a parcel where we have a giant parking lot and a building, giant parking lot and a building, okay? Where we've got minimal density from a people standpoint. The other end of the spectrum is, do we want to be more of a zero-lot-line type of community, where we've jammed downtown full of people? Parking is sometimes tough, you know? Parking's on-street primarily, but there are some other city lots in places. So which of those do we want to be? Because it really makes a difference on the parking needs of the community. And it was unanimous that everybody ended in this area. We want a dense, vibrant, sometimes crowded downtown area. Again, sometimes it's hard to see right now, but we're trying to look 30 years from now, okay? So with that decision, the planning department, John and Lindsey, were able to help us understand, from a highest and best use standpoint, per block, what is the parking requirement going to be? What's the on-street parking requirement going to be? So that helped us, and you can't see these, the detailed numbers aren't important, but that helped us understand, okay, here's the overall parking demand at full build-out, okay? Again, down the road. And so to illustrate this, we, and I can assure you, there's science and numbers behind this, but we chose to show it in a heat map format, because we thought that was the most effective and impactful. The greens represent, we have a lower demand, okay? So, down in this corner, the southeast corner, generally, we expect that to stay residential for a long, long time. And so, the parking demand is lower. I think intuitively, this area, where we all can see the potential, we expect this to have a much, much higher demand, so that's more of a red, okay? The one that was a little bit of a surprise to me was this area here. The planners in the city believe that this has got a lot of potential, and this is gonna develop as the veneer company, or Idaho veneer plant, over time, changes use. This has an opportunity to develop and have a high demand for parking. So we look at that, and we say, okay, we have, we know what we need, and now we know what we can provide, okay? That's what this map represents. And this is if we go through the entire city, and we lay out what we think we can accommodate from a parking standpoint, on-street now, parallel and angle parking. And it's a variety wherever you look, because we have different widths. The darker, the darker shades represent, we can't provide as much. And over here, the reason we can't is these roads are built out with no on-street parking. And so the ability to do on-street, at least right now, is lower. We're a little bit healthier in here, in the middle, because we have a lot of right-of-way. Out here, this is being developed into residential, where they have their own off-street parking. So the on-street potential is lower. The more important slide to look at is this one. When we take the demand minus what we can provide, and that is, what are our needs, okay? So what this shows us is, in these two areas, after we provide all the parking that we can, we're still going to have a deficit, okay? Again, 30 years from now. And so, what's this mean? It probably means the city is going to need to identify, we'd recommend they identify a lot in each of these locations in the future to provide surface-level, city-owned parking. And in the future, as needed, that can go vertical into a parking structure. The deficit in these areas, just so you know, order of magnitude is several hundred, 300, 400, in full build-out.
Hey Matt, real quick, did you guys evaluate the rail corridor there? The kind of that railroad right-of-way corridor as a potential area?
Of development or parking?
Parking.
We did not, we did not zero in on any specific parcels yet. And we did that for a reason. We don't necessarily want to tip anybody off that we want to come by your parcel. And so, it's general at this point, from a planning perspective, that in these areas, we need to find a lot. At first, we thought, right in here, let's pick up one of these parcels. But, from a parking demand standpoint, this is probably the worst place to put a surface-level lot or a structure, okay? Rather, we need them where the people are. Did that answer your question?
Kind of, I was talking about the rail corridor that, at some point, maybe even 30 years from now, may...
If it's not a rail corridor anymore?
Be no longer a rail corridor as an option.
The, excuse me, city center plan calls that rail corridor, at this point in time, as being a trail connecting corridor, so be more of a complimentary aspect to the trail that runs either alongside it, or be a part of it.
Okay.
That's a fair question, though. This is a little tough to see, but this is the overall concept design of the entire city. And I'm gonna zero in on a couple of these. But every segment of every street in the plan will have a concept design. And what I mean by that, this is an example of First, from Spokane to Frederick. So north is up, here is the brewery, this is an old photo. But in this segment, this is the conceptual road section that we have produced. So here, I'll work from the south and work north. We've got a sidewalk, I can't remember the width exactly, it's probably an eight-foot sidewalk. Parallel parking here, on-street bike lane, travel lanes, on-street bike lane, angle parking, and another sidewalk. The green that you see are stormwater collection and/or landscape opportunities. We've also shown illumination, all the pavement markings, pedestrian facilities. And so, in the document, in the plan, there will be an eight-and-a-half-by-11 page of each segment throughout. So, this little red indicator shows where that's at in the overall plan. Because we want to be able to show, if a developer comes in and says, "I want to develop this block," let's say, what are you going to require? Well, funny you should ask, here's what the city will require. Not everybody sees or understands the plan view, and so on a couple of these, we have a rendering shown. This is the same area, we're looking northeast, that's the new brewery building. Again, we have the sidewalk, this is south, north is kind of to the west way. Parallel parking, bike lane, travel lanes, bike lane again, and then the angle parking is here with stormwater here, street trees, lights, and whatnot. We won't do this for all of them, but some of them, just for perspective. Another quick example is Third, between Frederick and William. This is where we have wide right-of-way. So we have opportunity for a wide sidewalk, angle parking both sides, bike lane both sides. And then typically, we don't like to have angle parking too close to the intersections, because it clogs up the intersections, and so, we like to store the stormwater there. And it gives us an opportunity to put some bulbs in there to calm traffic somewhat. Here's another rendering of that. And then finally, the last example is one of our narrower right-of-ways. This is a north-south, Frederick from First to Second. It's pretty tight in here, so we've got, only have room for sidewalk, two parallel lanes, two travel lanes, and another sidewalk.
So Matt, really quick, just so I understand this, because it looks like in a lot of those slides, especially whether it's the on-street angled parking, it looks like, for instance, on the very first slide next to Post Falls Brewing, the driveway that exists there is now cut off. And so, would the idea there be that there's no onsite parking required, and that they're allowed to just have on-street parking?
Perfect question, I should have mentioned it, I'm glad you asked it. The other thing we want to convey, and we've conveyed in every public meeting, is, we're not out to take anybody's access away, okay? The city's not interested in removing driveways at this point. When something like this happens, it's when the city gets funding, if we get funding, there's probably going to have to be some type of interim arrangement where people still can have access to their driveways. We certainly wouldn't want to cut that off. But in the event redevelopment occurs, and things change completely, then yes, I think ultimately, the goal, if uses change to more commercial, it would be on-street parking primarily. But again, we're not suggesting, we're not cutting off access to your garage. But thank you, Ray, that's a great question. Real quick, stormwater treatment. With this plan, all stormwater will be taken out of an underground piping system, which eventually leads to the river, which is bad, and be treated in swales, which is generally better, so we can treat it before it discharges into our drinking water. The back-end angle parking was brought up early from the design and planning team from a, simply from a safety perspective. We want it, we felt strongly enough about it, just to take a look at it. So we walked the steering committee through the virtues of, the potential virtues of back-end angle parking, and the technical advisory committee through it. And there was enough interest in it that the city staff decided to implement a pilot project, just to see how it went. And I hope you've all had an opportunity to try it. I know it's new, I know it's scary, but it's, it's on Frederick, between Railroad and Fourth. This is an old photo, so this is the standard parking. All we've done is removed these marks and moved them the opposite way, and this bank, this bank, and this bank of stalls. And so, again, it's not, the angle, back-end angle parking is not a do-or-die for us. We just want to bring it up to be considered. And I'm gonna show you why. If you can look at these, at this exhibit, in the upper half of this, okay? This is traditional pull-straight-in parking, okay? So, you've done it a million times, you pull your car in, you go do your thing, oh, I'm sorry, you pull your car in, you open your doors, okay? So the first concern is you open your doors, and your kids jump out of the car, and they're pointed, the door's in their way, right? They're pointed towards the street, okay? Then you go do your shopping, and you come out, and to load your stuff in your trunk, you have to walk out into the street, or the bike lane, to load your stuff, okay? And then, when you go to back out, your eye, as a driver, is in the exact worst position to back out, especially for a cyclist coming down the street, okay? A driver as well. Conversely, if everything was just switched over, and look at these green cars, and the way you get into the spot is you put your blinker on, just like you would for a parallel stall, okay? You pull forward, and you back in. Admittedly, it's a little bit awkward the first time, just because it's new. But when you stop your car, your doors open, your kids jump out, they're generally pointed towards the sidewalk. When you go to load the back of your vehicle, you're doing it from the safety of the sidewalk. And then when you're leaving, your eyeball is in the perfect location, the best location, to see oncoming vehicles. So, from a safety perspective alone, that's why we pushed it a little bit, and that's why the city is looking at it from a pilot project. And I believe the plan is to run it all summer and see how it goes. And I think the reviews have been mixed, and we expected that. But, I believe there is more and more compliance, people are doing it right more often as time goes.
Hey Matt, is there any difference in dimension of the stalls between the two? Are the back-end stalls a little bit wider?
I suppose there could be, I don't know that there has to be.
Is there a standard, or is there no difference in standards?
I don't believe there's a difference. I don't believe there's a difference.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Wayfinding design is not part of the scope of work, as far as the branding and the look of the signing we do in our city center. But identifying locations and preparing for locations of where wayfinding should go certainly is. We're still kind of working on some of this. But we want to do two things. We want to make sure, people that aren't familiar with Post Falls are coming in, how do they get to downtown, okay? How do they get to Falls Park? How do they get to our library? Those types of things. So we want to make sure we identify where we tell people, not necessarily how we tell them, yet. And then also, once our visitors or our citizens are in city center, how do we tell them to get around? And so we're also identifying where some of that stuff goes. Again, the design of that is a whole process in and of itself. Way outside my area of expertise. So again, the vision circling back is, we're doing this to make sure we understand what we're doing, and we have direction, so we know, because if we know where the end goal is, we can make corrections along the way to get there. Secondly, we want to attract funding, because in order to do some of this stuff, it requires lots of money. And so often, supplementing our budgets with outside funding is the only way to do it. And then finally, as investors come in, we want to demonstrate to them that we've done our homework and that we're ready for them, and it's going to be a good investment in Post Falls. So as far as the remaining schedule, we are scheduled to go before the city council next week, finishing up this plan the week, the end of this month, with a final city council plan adoption, provided you adopt it or approve it tonight in, sometime in September. And so as Bill mentioned, we're seeking a recommendation, recommendation from P and Z to council to approve the plan as an addendum to the city center plan. And with that, I think I'm happy to answer any questions that we didn't already answer.
Sam, any questions at all?
I've got a question for John. It has, so, most of that down there, or most of the areas, a smart code designation currently, that's correct, correct?
Everything west of Idaho Street, north of First, south of the freeway, and east of Spokane Street, well
So almost everything in that area?
Almost everything, yeah.
So, how does this parking plan fit with parking requirements and zoning codes, so that they fit hand-in-hand, so that anyone who comes in and goes to do a development, like Post Falls Brewing, for instance, they've got a parking requirement based on smart code, but they also have to have access for a driveway if they have to have onsite parking. How does that mesh? Or is there, has that been addressed? Because I didn't seem to, maybe I was just dumb and didn't see the full plan or link to the plan.
There's, so the smart code itself allows some onsite credit, so when you provide, but we didn't have a method prior to this plan to look at what we would be requiring for onsite parking. So when, like, the brewery came in, they met their requirement for onsite, but we had no ways to negotiate what we, or discuss what improvements they could get credit for for doing onsite.
Okay.
So versus Title 18, though, currently, you can't do onsite, which is outside this area. You can't do onsite and get credit for any onsite, I mean, off-street and get credit for on.
Okay.
So
Are we going to have to do some work to mesh those two, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, so we're going to be, after, this sort of sets the goal. We now know what we can accommodate in the rights of way. So now that we have that dialed in, we're in a position where we can go back into our zoning codes and take a look at what we're requiring onsite. We may still require some onsite parking. We may then look at doing a fee-in lieu of situation where you can essentially either construct the improvements in the right-of-way, or you can cash out the onsite parking, so that the city can then take those funds, accumulate them over time, and do sort of a block at a time to the improvements.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that piece is, remains to be completed. We wanted to get this piece done so we knew what the target was.
Sure, that makes sense. Okay.
Commissioner Kimball, I, Bill just reminded me that one of the things we talked in depth about was, if we have the zero lot line design going, there isn't really opportunity for driveways so much from the main streets, but alley access, right?
Sure. For deliveries and garbage pickup and whatnot.
Or some parking on the backside of some of these buildings. So in a lot of downtowns, alleys provide that outlet.
Perfect. Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Any other questions? All right, then, that's the case. We would look for a recommendation to move this forward to council for review.
I would move to recommend approval of the city center parking plan and forward it on to city council. As such, I think. I think that's the motion we needed, isn't it?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Bishop?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to the last piece of new business this evening, Post Falls Tech Park Urban Renewal Plan, Comprehensive Plan Conformity Resolution.
Well, John's heading up there, I'll give you a bit of a recap on why we're doing this. We did it recently on a de-annexation request. The Idaho codes on creation of an urban renewal district requires that before the council has their public hearing on adoption of a plan, that the planning commission take a look at the plan and make a determination on whether or not it fits with the comprehensive plan for the jurisdiction. So from here, assuming that you find that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, you pass the resolution tonight, which essentially completes that, approve that, that recommendation that it meets the comprehensive plan. The city council would then receive that recommendation at the next council hearing. The noticing requirements for the hearings on an urban renewal district are a bit weird. You have to actually, the council has to receive your recommendation before they can notice up the hearing. The notice is then 30 to 60 days, which is, again, a bit of an oddity. So we'll notice it up and set up a hearing sometime in October on the creation of the district.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Davis and commissioners. So yes, I'll be looking at this plan right here. It's the Post Falls Technoly, Technology District Urban Renewal Plan, and looking at the comprehensive plan and its conformity. First, I'm going to zoom in to the area, the boundaries. So you see here in the black, the black boundary is here, that's the boundary of what would be the, it comes down right along here to Charville. So that would be the boundaries for this tech district. Would like to identify this area, it does have various uses. In yellow there, that predominantly on the south of Prairie Avenue is residential of nature, there is planned to be a school there, some city parks there along Prairie. You may see some transitioning of uses there that have not yet been identified but have been discussed. On the northeast corner, Zone C, you probably see some commercial with some other mixed uses on the northwest corner of Highway 41 and Prairie. And purple there, that is Tolemore and part of the East Post Falls Urban Renewal District. Zoom in briefly to the tech park area more specifically. So in red there, that's where you see the commercial area that's being preliminarily planned for, and then this area with the purple and the green being the mixed-use tech park-type area that's currently, well, zone technology mix for that purpose. So in looking at, through this plan, I identified here, I'll show you, I'm not going to read off every single one of these, but these are all the policies in the comprehensive plan that it's consistent with and is in conformity with. The overall theme of these policies, though, are to get residences connected to the places of work or commerce through pedestrian corridors, mixed-use areas, concentrate your heavier uses along your higher classified roadways, to be consistent with the mixed-use nature of the Highway 41 corridor plan. With development of the utilities, infrastructure on the site will help not only create the job growth as specified in the renewal plan, but also help create the diversity of mixing of uses of, along this area. So, at this point, I'd stand for any questions you have for me for this plan, it's conformity to the comp plan, or
Questions at this point?
No, not really. It's, yeah, I mean, with regard to the comp plan, it seems pretty straightforward. And I can go back to this map here and reiterate, Highway 41's going to have a multi-use trail on the east side, so these residents that are, you know, residing in this part could go north-south along that multi-use trail. As a city, we're also going to get the multi-use trail on the west side through development. You also have the Prairie Trail along this corridor, connecting neighborhoods to the east, to places of commerce, and our parks and rec systems as well. So
Yeah.
All of which goes to that comp plan page that I had shown up there.
I mean, as it relates to the comp plan, I don't really think I have any comments or questions. There's a couple of things in there that are, that I thought were a little interesting that don't really have anything, any bearing on the comp plan, but when reading the resolution from city council and designating the area as eligible for an urban renewal district, one of the cited reasons was the lack of sewer infrastructure in the area, specifically the 12th Avenue lift station and the 12th Avenue Force Main. I found it really interesting that that was just kind of added as a potential add-on project to the end of the reimbursements versus all of the projects in Zone A, B, and C. And I also thought it was kind of, and I understand why, the area to the south is included because it's got existing development projects going on that will add immediate funding to it, but although it doesn't really apply, I would encourage maybe staff to work with the applicant, or, I don't even know how that works, if there's an applicant or how that is working there, but to include the lift station and Force Main as maybe a priority project, because that's one of the reasons that we're actually, that the resolution was made versus an add-on project at the end. Really, that's my only comment.
So, basically, at this point, we're just looking for a motion that indeed it is in conformity with the comprehensive plan, correct?
So the motion would be to approve the resolution that you have in your packet?
Right.
With regards to the Post Falls Tech Park Urban Renewal Plan, I would move to approve the resolution in the packet.
A second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
All right. Takes us to item number 12 this evening, staff comments.
There's none.
No staff comments? Any commission comments? Anything for the good of the order? No?
Nope.
All right. That puts us right at the 60-minute mark, so I would look for a motion for adjournment.
I can't make all the motions tonight.
I was going to say, you get a star.
I mean, the first one, look, does that count? I move to adjourn.
So move.